All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting of October 17th to order. If you would all remember to turn off your cellphones, we greatly appreciate that, too. If you would stand for the political meeting. Both of them.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of Michigan.
Flag of Michigan.
Hold on, everybody.
It's right here.
Okay, we got it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of Michigan.
What happened to that?
Oh, my.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of Michigan and to the state for which it stands, to beautiful and influence, united by a virtue scale, where virtue opportunity and justice for all is our ideal.
But it's missing memory.
You have to remember that.
We failed.
Yeah, we did.
It is mine, okay. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sherper?
Here.
Bowman? Will file?
Here.
Meinhart?
Here.
Mayor Falcone?
Here.
Okay, we need an approval of the agenda. I think we have a couple of updates, don't we, Mark?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. There are two slight additions. One is to add, under Communications, a banner application. And then the second is to add, under our current session, acquisition of real property.
To make a motion to approve the agenda without addition?
Support.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowman? Will file?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Sherper?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries. This time we'll open the floor for public comment. We do ask when you come forward if you would please say your name and then also write your name and your address, and limit your time to three minutes.
Don't know if anybody ever saw the paper today. We had a good article by Rick Charmley. The state and the governor signed law amending the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. Basically, the business end of it, the Medical Marijuana Facilities Regulation Act. It's going to take the blessing of local municipalities, cities, townships and such. I'm looking for your blessing someday, somehow. I'd like to zone for these places. I'd like you guys to talk about this and put it to Planning Commission. And hopefully, we can work together on this. I've got all the petitions ready, but I don't really want to go knocking. It's going to get cold outside pretty quick. But we've done it before and we'll do it some more. I'll do the same thing up in Herring Township. I'd rather move to Cadillac. I think there's a need for it here. A lot of money, a lot of business, a lot of people driving their cars to Traverse City or wherever they can find a safe transfer point to get their meds. But I think there's a need for it here in Cadillac. I'd sure like to work with the city. Sure like your blessing. By state law, I need your blessing. Thank you.
I think seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And that takes us to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on October 3rd.
I'll make a motion, excuse me, to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Wolfau?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Sherper?
Yes.
Bowman? Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
So the next thing on our agenda then is the communications.
Yes, we have a request for the display of a banner from October 31st to November 14th, 2016, for the Cadillac Band Boosters Craft Show.
I'll make a motion to approve the display of a banner from October 31st until November 14th, 2016, for the Cadillac Band Booster Craft Show.
Support.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Meinhart?
Yes.
Sherper?
Yes.
Bowman?
Will file?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries. And now for some appointments.
It's being recommended to approve the reappointment of Kevin Cent to the Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on October 1st, 2019.
I'll make that motion to reappoint Kevin Cent to Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire October 1st, 2019. And to thank him for his years on that commission.
Been about 15 now?
Something like that.
Support.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Sherper?
Yes.
Bowman?
Will file?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Sherper?
Yes.
Bowman? Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Also being recommended to approve the reappointment of Leo Povaglio to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on October 21st, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Leo Povaglio to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire October 21, 2019.
Can we support that?
I support that.
Could we have a roll call, Sandy?
Councilmember Bowman? Will file?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Sherper?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes. Motion carries.
And already, we're at the City Manager's Report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. Before you, I have color copies of Trick or Treating Guidelines. They're just very slightly different than the version that's in the packet, and this is the version that I'm planning on posting on our website and Facebook site accordingly. Just to summarize, Trick or Treating is on Halloween, as it's been in years past. The police department has generally recommended that hours of operation are between 5:00 in the afternoon and 8:00 in the evening. The list of guidelines essentially includes just some tips for both trick-or-treaters and for homeowners and for parents. I know that there's been some questions that have arisen in the past about having the city establish or set up an alternative date for Trick or Treating. That has not been our practice in the past. Certainly, if that is something that council wishes us to do, we can't do that. But going off of what we have done in the past, we've always had Trick or Treating on Halloween. As an aside, I am aware of other, at least one other organization in town, and that being the Downtown Cadillac Association, is hosting a special downtown Trick or Treating event. And would encourage folks to contact that organization for the details. I believe it's on the 26th of October, but I'm not 100% certain sitting here today. But in any event, the guidelines that are before you are very similar to what we issued a year ago, and we wanted to bring it out publicly this evening.
Right. Thank you for putting all of that together. You know, I think that it's important to leave this on Halloween, because we think that if we tried to reschedule it to a Saturday, there would be people up both nights, and I think that would become very confusing.
And one of the things to keep in mind is that Westford, Missouri, ISD always schedules their TD, their Professional Development Day, the next day after the 31st. If it's on a Friday, they will be the following Monday. So there's no school that day, so it doesn't like kids are out and then have to go to school, so.
Caps as well.
Well, caps participate in that.
Right, but I've heard nothing. I've had no comments from anyone suggesting that we should change to another date, so.
We either have everybody who thinks as far as I know likes the 30th.
This is just for informational purposes, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the item B, the recommendation regarding wellhead protection grant services. The city was awarded a wellhead protection grant for 2016. The grant has a cap of $14,500, and it does require a 50% match by the city with the remaining 50% being reimbursable by the grant. So $7,250 is reimbursable. Fisian Vanderbrink is our consultant and has been working with the city, currently is still working with the city, on wellhead protection matters, and did essentially administer on our behalf the grant, thinking that we were below our spending threshold, spending threshold of $7,500, knowing that 50% of the grant was $7,250. We thought that it wasn't going to be an issue, but we did realize just recently that the grant in total is above the $7,500, and in total does go through our fiduciary system, and that's why I'm reporting this evening, essentially asking that retroactively we authorize Fisian Vanderbrink to be the administrator of the 2016 fiscal year wellhead protection center, excuse me, wellhead protection grant. Josh Sierra told us here, presenting details about what this is, and questions regarding the details about what this is for. But do apologize, we need to request the rest of the year. Yep. All right. Anything?
No, I understood.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to waive competitive bidding regarding the services acquired by the 2016 fiscal year wellhead protection grant support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Wolfau?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Sherper?
Yes.
Bowman? Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
I need a motion for it. Do that.
Yeah. No, 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 no.
To...
Through Fisian Vanderbrink?
Yeah.
Yes.
To... It'd be to retroactively...
Retroactively approve Fields and Vanderbrink to administrate the 2016 fiscal year wellhead protection grant.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Meinhart?
Yes.
Sherper?
Yes.
Bowman?
Will file?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody, for your understanding. The next few items are somewhat related, as they are related to assistance to firefighters' grants, or AFGs for short. The first one is with respect to the Fire Department Breathing Air Compressor Grant Application. Our current breathing air system is 18 years old and no longer has the capacity to maintain the pressures required by modern firefighting air packs. The new system, or a new system rather, that we're estimating would cost approximately $43,000 to acquire. Should we get an AFG grant, it only would require than a contribution of a 5% local match, which in this case would be approximately $2,150. The request this evening, and again, this request will be similar to the next couple of requests after this item that we'll be getting into, is to essentially move up on our capital improvement schedule, or capital improvements plan, this item, and then to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign all documents that may be necessary should we be successful in receiving grant funds awarded to the AFG program for this item, so. I don't know, Fred, if you want to add anything to what this does?
Currently not in our capital improvement plan. It's adding to it, not moving up.
Thank you for that explanation.
This one's not in.
I feel that way.
We just found out through the grant process that we're able to get one, apply for one, so we feel pretty good about it.
Wonderful.
5% match, that's awfully good.
Yeah, that's a big difference in cost to us. So I'll make a motion to add replacement breathing air system to the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2017, 2018, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign all necessary documents.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sherper?
Yes.
Bowman?
Will file?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. This next one is with respect to a pumper truck. The pumper truck is currently in the capital improvements plan for fiscal year 19. It is estimated to cost about $475,000. Should we be successful in receiving an AFG grant, that 5% match brings it to approximately And in this instance, we are requesting that we move it up to fiscal year 2018, and then authorize the mayor and city clerk accordingly to sign documents that may be necessary.
The question that I had about this one, because it was in the 2018-19 capital...
Fiscal year 19.
Yes, sorry. It was in that year. If we move it forward, would we move something else back to 2019?
I don't know. It's possible that we may, that we might. It's also possible that even when we get to fiscal year 19, that we would have to defer this acquisition if we didn't have a funding source for it.
Okay.
So I know it's not a very clear answer, but...
I do have a question. I mean, that was in fiscal year 19. Supposedly, we were going to have the money at that time to spend the $475,000 amount we're looking at here.
$475,000.
So supposedly, we were going to have the $475,000 for fiscal year 19 to buy the new truck.
Well, it would be difficult for me to say that without question that we would have the money, as council mayor may not know, the capital improvement plan is a five-year plan, and we try to itemize what we forecast as our capital infrastructure and equipment needs are going to be, not necessarily tie them directly to a revenue or funding source. Doesn't mean that the demand isn't there, doesn't mean that the need isn't there, and unfortunately, as time does tell, we tend to defer a lot of our equipment year after year because of the lack of available funding to move forward with some of these heavy equipment purchases. And so, as I like to say, that we would have that funding in fiscal year 19. I just couldn't tell you if we would or not. But if we had the opportunity for a grant...
The $23,750 is a lot, yes, or...
Could a lot more likely.
Yes. Okay. I will make the motion to move the pumper replacement project to fiscal year 2017-18 of the capital improvement program, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign all necessary documents.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowman? Will file?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Sherper?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. These items certainly will be very, very exciting should we get the grants. The next one in front of you, we have a copy of what the modular training system will look like, the simulated training system will look like. This is with respect to a regional dual mobile multi-trainer, live-fire training simulator. As a part of trying to acquire this simulator, we're looking at entering into an inter-agency cooperation agreement with Herring and Cherry Grove Fire Departments as we apply for this FEMA AFG grant. Essentially, these simulators are dual 48-foot portable live-training simulators that are on a tractor-trailer type of chassis. It'll provide firefighters with a Class A and liquid propane gas training opportunities, including, within their training opportunities will be ventilation, forceful entry, stand pipe training, sprinkler training, repelling training, roof operation training, Denver window drills, wall breaching, shoring, confined space, and self-contained breathing apparatus training. And so, there's really a whole host of opportunities that the fire department would have, and not just our fire department, but Herring and Cherry Grove would have should we be successful in getting the grant. As a part of this whole process, it's estimated that the equipment is approximately $350,000. The 5% match will be split between the three departments, and that cost will be approximately $5,800 each under the recommended action. Again, it's recommended that if the fire department is awarded funds to the AFG program, the council approves adding a portable live-fire training simulator to the CIP for fiscal year 2017-18, which is fiscal year 18, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign all documents that may be necessary.
I will tell you, when I was reading through this in preparation for the meeting, I was really excited to see this collaborative effort and work going on with Herring and Cherry Grove. I did have a question in regards to this type of setup. Would this be something that, I'm sure a lot of communities or municipalities don't have this, would this be something that we could use or rent or lease out to other municipalities for training?
We're having a meeting tomorrow to start working on, we have to have an inter-agency agreement, call it MOA, MOU, which will be a day in agreement between all the parties. So we're starting to work on that, and part of that is, I'm not sure if we can really rent it out under the grant, but we can certainly get a maintenance fee or something similar. I've been trying to rent some, so much rents, they don't want to rent them, but you have to give like a donation to a maintenance fee.
Okay, that's kind of where I was going there.
Yeah, we're going to open it up to all the county fire departments. It was just cleaner to do only three fire departments total versus all 12, as far as the grant application. Plus, if we keep our population under 20,000 people, the match is 5%. So if it's over, it goes to 10%, and then...
Great.
So we're barely under 20,000 people with three departments.
Oh, good.
So we do plan on sharing it, obviously, and it'll help lower our annual costs by the more people we have sign up.
Wonderful.
So we're pretty excited about it.
Good.
Nice.
And you will have to come back at some point with this, I'm sorry, with this inter-agency agreement. I'm sure you're going to have to approve that. But we have to start the ball rolling, and that's, because they have to take it back to their boards, but it's pretty promising what's behind closed doors as far as we want to get involved.
Good.
Okay.
I will make the motion to approve the addition of a portable live-fire training simulator to the fiscal year 2017-18 capital improvement program, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign all necessary documents. Again, approval is contingent upon receipt of grant funds from the AFG program.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Wolfau?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Sherper?
Yes.
Bowman? Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. We're now under adoption of ordinances and resolutions. A is with respect to the adoption of a resolution to approve payment by credit card policy. This is something that we've talked about and are working on for quite some time. We are already able to accept credit cards online for taxes. Is that correct, Don?
Yes.
We will soon be able to accept credit cards here in the offices for basically everything that we do, everything from taxes and special assessment payments, utility bills, parking tickets, permit fees, and other miscellaneous receivables and fees and charges that we have, should be up and running by or before the end of this calendar year. We had to wait until our new financial system, basically was completely up and running and humming along before this would be fully implemented. And so, before City Council, this evening, is a resolution that adopts the included policy regarding the use of credit cards.
I know that we started talking about this probably, I think, three years ago when I first joined the group.
At least.
Yeah. So it's really exciting to get into the current century with our system, and I know that a lot of people are going to really appreciate that, so.
No, I noticed, though, that credit cards won't be accepted by phone, mail, or email. It will be, have an online payment capacity for these other services sometime? I'm talking to myself for mental charge.
Yeah, so the phone, email, or that is, so that, that's a safeguard, so somebody doesn't just call in and say, here's my credit card, and you write it down, and their expiration and their name, and leave it sitting on your desk.
Right, right.
So there will be a phone number that people can call and go through an automated system to make their payments, and they can pay a lot of the main bills online, but you can't call in, give someone your credit card number, and that's just a safeguard thing.
Good.
So there will be the capacity to do it by phone, but you won't be talking with us, you'll be using the third party, they have a phone service that's included. So that's the point of that. Kind of called like a clean desk policy, where you don't just leave stuff sitting around that people could use then to fraudulently gain access to your credit.
That's standing. Great. I'd like to make a motion to approve, no, I'm not, to adopt the resolution to approve the payment by credit card policy.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Meinhart?
Yes.
Sherper?
Yes.
Bowman?
Will file?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries. This evening, we do have the minutes of boards and commissions. We do have the July 25th and August 22nd meeting minutes for the Planning Commission, along with June 29th and August 31st with the Downtown Development Authority, and finally, the minutes for the Cadillac Arts Council that was held on September 25th.
That takes us to the last public comment.
Is there a question?
Can you come up?
I walked in on your credit card, I know, I know.
John Putman, hi, everybody, here in Cadillac. So on the credit card thing, is a walk-in allowed with a card?
Soon, yep. This quarter, yep. The online thing is easier to do, access to with the database stuff, but, yep, we're getting it, it's testing right now.
At the point, we can just walk in?
Yep.
Perfect.
And there will be a small fee.
I wondered that.
I need to pass that along as well.
Say anything about that.
Yep, so it's 3%.
3%.
Or it's $3 if you do an e-check, and that's online. And that's a fee that works.
You negotiated your rate very well.
Was that?
You didn't negotiate your rate very well.
Well, there's a little more to it than that. I understand.
Okay. Very good. 3%. Thank you. Thank you, council.
Don Koshmider, Cadillac, Michigan. I see a couple items on the agenda tonight. We're talking about a fire pumper, dual mobile, multi-trainer, live-fire. These are equipment, this is equipment that we certainly need. We want to keep our men and women in law enforcement or fire department with the latest equipment and technologies, but rather than taking the stick and the carrot from FEMA and the federal government, perhaps we could come up with the money some other way, perhaps by licensing and zoning medical marijuana provisioning centers. And I propose with this ordinance that we amend the Cadillac zoning ordinance by adding a section, section nine, medical marijuana provisioning centers. So, Harkus, if you would, please put me on the agenda as soon as possible, and let's talk about this on the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to the end of the order. Does anybody have anything this evening?
Um, no. I was by the park there this weekend, and even though it was raining and cold, there was still kids playing in the splash pad, having fun. I wouldn't let my kids, but they were out there getting soaked. I'm glad you said that, John, because I was going to go in the same direction tonight. I've had several people approach me saying how much they like what we've done down there in the park, and every time I go by there, there's people around that fireplace. It's amazing. And again, tonight, on the way into the meeting, there was like five people sitting around the fireplace, so it's really, it's kind of exciting to see that what has been done down there is being appreciated, and just putting a bandy down, so, yeah, it's a good thing.
I have an announcement that the regularly scheduled Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council meeting would be this Wednesday. It's canceled because it's also banned festival and... meeting would be this Wednesday is canceled because it's also band festival and our leadership on that council, our band members, and I wish them luck at festival and we'll pick up again in November.
Marcus, did you have anything?
No, I'm just sleeping.
Along the same lines as you guys went on the plaza, we did have the Color Train coming to town this weekend and there were a ton of people in town and it was very cool. So that fireplace was a very popular spot, so.
It was a lot of heat.
Yeah, it does, it does. I also wanted to mention that last Friday, the Chambers Lecture Luncheon, we actually had a gentleman from the Michigan Municipal League come up and share what we listened to when we were up on Mackinac Island about the difficulty and the money that isn't coming back due to the different communities. And there were a lot of people from the county and the city and then even business owners in town and I think it was, it was a great session, don't you, Marcus?
Oh, I do.
And people asked a lot of really, really good questions. And, you know, for the city of Cadillac, between 2002 and 2012, we were not, we did not receive over $4 million that we would have in the previous ten years. And Michigan is the only state that is receiving less funding and completely in the red than any other state in the United States. And so, yeah, I thought it was really important for the community to hear that, so thank you for getting them up here.
I'm working on, today and now, I am working on trying to get a electronic version of some of those slides so that we can share them with the public.
Good. My question that I asked you during the luncheon, I probably just should have asked that gentleman, but I wondered during that same period of time, that 10 years, were there any other states that actually found themselves in the red below that line where Michigan sits alone right now? Did they ever find themselves below that line and was there something that they were able to do to pull themselves out of it?
Yeah, I'm not sure if there was three others, but I'm sure they did anything to it.
Okay, so the next time you talk to them, if you'd ask them that question, it would be interesting to know. Okay. We had a pretty amazing event, by the way, on Saturday night here in Cadillac for the YMCA and I understand that we raised over $30,000. I don't have the exact number yet, but we do know that they gave $30,000 to the YMCA and their program and so that's pretty spectacular.
That's outstanding.
Yeah.
According to what I saw on YouTube, America danced.
A lot of people could dance. It was a great show. Okay, that takes us into closed session. Would somebody like to make that motion? Do we need to update anything with this?
I'd be happy to read it.
Okay, all right, that'd be great.
So, this evening we're looking for a motion to adjourn the closed session to discuss pending civil litigation regarding miring company LLC, the City of Cadillac Planning Commission at all, case number 16-2967-AW, City of Cadillac, the Charter Township of Herring, Westwood County Superior Court, case number 16-26714-CZ, and Giant Supermarkets, Inc., the City of Cadillac, Michigan Tax Tribunal, docket number 15-002371, for the reason that an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the city's trial or settlement strategy in each case and to discuss the acquisition of real property. Additionally, we'd like to invite John Wallace, Director of Community Development, Jeff Dietlin, Director of Utilities, Joe Quarterfield, our assessor, and John Putman Jr., Chair of our Planning Commission accordingly.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Candy, could we have a roll call?
House Member Sherper?
Yes.
Bowman, Wolf File?
Yes.
Einhardt?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes, motion carried.